Council Agenda: Township Precipity Troy Hills. Regular Township Council Meeting of December 7, 2024. Introduction, Posting of Notice. Adequate notice to this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on January 4, 2024, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on January 8, 2024. Can I ask everyone to please rise for the flag salute?
Okay, roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. McGrath.
Here.
Mr. Musella.
Here.
Mr. Neglia.
Here.
Mr. Karifi. Also in attendance are Mayor James Barbario, Business Administrator Jamie Cryin, Township Attorney Michael Lavery, and Municipal Clerk Khaled Madden, Council President. We have a quorum, you may begin. Upcoming meetings: January 7, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. That's the reorganization meeting, followed by the agenda meeting, and then January 21, 2024, at 7 p.m., which is the regular meeting. Moving on to ordinances, second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 2024-19, an ordinance of the Township Council of Township Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 420 Water to increase water rates and charges. The notice for ordinance 2024-19 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, on December 6, 2024, introduced at the November 26, 2024, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2024-19?
Motion.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to public hearing. Motion to open up the public hearing, ordinance 2024-19?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public on this ordinance only. You have five minutes to speak, only on this ordinance, okay? Seeing no one, motion to close the public hearing, ordinance 2024-19?
One.
Oh, Nick, come on up, Nick, of course, why am I not surprised there?
Uh, Nick Comyek, Lake Kyle Rock. Can we have an overall assessment of how this new raise will affect the average citizen in Precipity? What, are you done? Because I can answer that. Oh.
Yeah, it's for minimum quarterly quantity of 10,000 gallons, the charge, minimum quarterly charge is going from $36.44 to $37.72. So, $36.44 to $37.72 for minimum quarterly gallons of 10,000 gallons.
Well, that's it, that's it, Nick, sorry.
Yeah, I got, and I can give you.
You can see him after the meeting.
All right, I'll ask the question again.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage be said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2024-20, an ordinance of the Township Council of Township Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 329, Section 17, sewer rental fees of the Code of the Township Precipity Troy Hills. The notice for ordinance 2024-20 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, on December 6, 2024, and introduced at the November 26, 2024, regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2024-20?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, a motion to open up the public hearing, ordinance 2024-20?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public on this ordinance only. You have five minutes to speak. Okay, seeing no one, can I please have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is closed, whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance 2024-19?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2024-21, an ordinance of the Township Council of Township Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending Chapter 119 Cannabis of the Code of the Township Precipity Troy Hills. The notice for ordinance 2024-21 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, on December 9, 2024, and introduced at the December 3, 2024, agenda meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2024-21?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the public hearing, could I please have a motion to open up the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public. You have five minutes to speak on this ordinance only. Oh, wow.
My name, my name is, um, this is on. I think that the council and the public need additional information to decide whether they can support or oppose this cannabis ordinance tonight, and some of its specific criteria. Here, Bob. Come in. Frank Miller. Questions that I have are as follows. How much tax revenue is a retail cannabis dispensary expected to bring in each year? What are the annual cost estimates to Precipity to support a cannabis dispensary? For example, costs associated with issuing licenses and permits to the dispensary, costs associated with the enforcement of regulations and conducting inspections, costs associated with the increased need for policing in order to address potential increases in impaired driving, illegal sales, and cannabis-related crime, costs related to auditing the financial operation of the dispensary to ensure that Precipity is receiving the tax revenue that it's entitled to. Next question, the license to operate a cannabis dispensary must be renewed annually. Can Precipity deny a license renewal if any of the following conditions occur? If the net income and tax revenue generated by sales at the dispensary does not meet expectations, if traffic accidents in Precipity increase by an amount that exceeds statistical norms, if crime in Precipity increases by an amount that exceeds statistical norms, if the usage of marijuana by school-aged children increases by an amount that exceeds statistical norms, and if medical conditions such as cannabis use disorder and marijuana addiction reach unacceptable levels. And the last question is, what happens to the status of the dispensary if a new administration and council repeal the cannabis ordinance, or if Precipity voters reject cannabis sales in a future referendum? If the administration and the council cannot answer these questions at this time, then you two do not have sufficient information to vote on tonight's cannabis ordinance. In this case, I ask that you table the ordinance, amend it if necessary, and reschedule it for another time. Thank you. You got any answers?
Yeah, listen, I'll just say, all your questions, if the tax revenue doesn't turn out to be what the town may believe it to be, no, you couldn't, you couldn't deny a license. If car accidents increase with no connection to a cannabis dispensary, no, you could not. There's got to be some connection to the licensed business. So, if car accidents go up one year for something unrelated, then, no, you couldn't. If crime goes up, if it's not, if you can't tie it to the cannabis business, then, no, you couldn't turn them down. If use of marijuana in children increases, again, you can't deny a license to somebody if you can't connect it, whatever you think the ill is that it might create. And also remember that it's legal in New Jersey, so other towns around us are legalizing it and allowing dispensaries, so, you know, how do we know that somebody wasn't under the influence from some other facility and comes through? I'm just, that's basically the law, is that you're not going to be able to deny somebody the renewal of their license unless you can have a direct connection. And if it doesn't generate the type of revenue that you expected, that's also not a reason to reject it, so, um, I'm just saying legally, not whether I agree with it, you know.
All right.
But Council President.
Go ahead.
There is a renewal fee every year, to add on to those questions, answer to those questions, so every year it has to be renewed. If an incoming administration chooses to do things differently, they can choose to do things differently. Any ordinance can be repealed by ordinance.
Okay, so there's, I was concerned that there's, there's a way out if things don't go the way they're supposed to, so we do have a way out. Nick Comyek again, Lake Kyle Rock. I see here it's like we're creating a military prison, video equipment, tape recording, private security guards, or the Precipity police force. Is this a norm for operating a boutique with marijuana in the state? This is, well, why isn't the same for liquor sales or vape products? Look at the degeneracy here, it's all over the town. They don't have cameras in liquor stores, and they allow these degenerate products? How many accidents or, you know, drink, drive, and litter, do these products cost? It makes no sense to be so prejudiced toward a ancient medicine that's been around for thousands of years. And, and it, I don't know how anybody can even afford to open it up. You might as well have a detail from the Army Special Forces Station at the boutique and say that Precipity taxpayers might even have to put the police there. So, it's a little, little ridiculous, and I give anybody credit who can operate any business under these circumstances, but here's, here's the degeneracy right here, and it's all over the place, and this is allowed, this is a norm, so it's a little, little extreme.
Good evening, council members. My name's Gina, and I just have a couple of questions. Section 119.7 on the license application requirements under D, just a question for the Business Administrator which is going to establish the application period, whether that's rolling or whether there's a deadline. My question was when we can expect that? Any news on that within the coming days or weeks for when that period would be? And then if denied an application, will the applicant be told a reason for that denial, and if so, would they be able to resubmit again? And that's it, that's my questions. Oh, and if there's someone to point me towards, say, a secretary or someone who knows more info on this, I'd be happy to ask them the same questions as well.
Just repeat the questions one more time for me, please?
Sure, of course. So, when might we know the timeline for when we can start applying for the cannabis retail business application, and is it going to be like a deadline, or is it going to be a rolling process?
So, after the ordinance is passed, there will be a 20-day stoppage period.
Okay.
Once that period is over, in the new year, we will then put out on the bulletin when applications will be accepted. They will be accepted on a rolling basis until the administration deems to stop that, which they have a right to do so. With regards to denials, you may or may not be given a reason for denial.
Okay.
That depends.
And would you be able to resubmit if you were denied?
You can resubmit, assuming that the time period is still open.
Oh, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it, done.
Anyone else?
First of all, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday, however you celebrate, and a happy and healthy new year. If you've got your health, you've got everything. I was wondering why the function to ask for an open request is not listed under the transparency header?
Sir, this says this is only on this ordinance.
Oh, it's only on.
This is only on this ordinance right now. We didn't get to regular.
The public session is next.
Yeah. Sorry, I got here late, I apologize.
It's okay.
But anyway, have a happy holiday.
As longtime residents of Precipity, my husband, Sean, and I are fully in support of amending the cannabis ordinance. We would like to thank the mayor and his administration for the time and effort that they put into creating it. As owners of Happy Days Boutique, we've been publicly advocating for this change for the past two years. Throughout this time, it has been our mission to make a positive and meaningful impact in our community. We'd like to highlight some of the work that we've already accomplished through Happy Days Boutique. We have held free educational programs on cannabis-related topics, including cannabis as a therapeutic medicine and de-stigmatizing cannabis. We are co-founders of the Precipity Neighborhood Watch, a volunteer group established in July 2023, consisting of local residents that are dedicated to public safety through strategic civic engagement. We've developed and coordinated monthly watch meetings, featuring presentations from organizations including the New Jersey Bike and Walk Coalition, the FBI, and we've also hosted a CPR and first aid course. We are also active members, mission partners, and sponsors of the Kiwanis Club, a volunteer organization that improves children's lives through service projects that address critical issues like education, health, and poverty. We've also connected with and established relationships with the Chief of Police and Police Department, Superintendent and members of the Board of Ed, Town Council, the Economic Development Committee, and many others who have a vested interest in this community. We've done this to better understand what concerns exist and how we can work collaboratively to be a valuable asset to Precipity. Public health and safety are a top priority for us as residents, healthcare professionals, and business owners, and we believe in being public-facing and transparent. As you know, the cannabis industry is highly regulated. It has strict compliance regulations to ensure public health and safety. In addition to my experience working in the cannabis industry, my husband and I both own and operate businesses in healthcare, which is also a highly regulated industry. We understand what it takes to operate in this environment because we do it every day. Lastly, as we continue to dedicate ourselves to service organizations that promote public health and safety and youth empowerment, we hope to expand these efforts by opening Happy Days Boutique in Precipity. We are very eager to contribute even further for the benefit of our community. Thank you all for your time.
I would also like to thank the council for, my name's Tony Fasano, for passing this ordinance. I've had to go to other towns, it's helping my wife's severe arthritis dramatically as compared to other creams. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is closed, whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. May I please have a motion to approve the resolution for above ordinance 2024-21?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving along to the public session, I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public session?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is now open to the public, you have five minutes to speak on any matter.
Good evening, sorry, I had a surgery this weekend, so I really don't have much of a voice. I see on the agenda that there is a, an appointment, you know, for the zoning board position, and, you know, I love the opportunity to serve this town, you know, do more for, as I've lived here for close to 14 years, I'd love to get more involved, and, you know, with my experience in the real estate field, you know, I feel like I would be a great asset to the town. Thank you.
I would like to talk to you tonight about the drought and resident awareness of the need to conserve water. I was not here at the last meeting, although I understand there was some discussion about this issue, but I don't know if any action was discussed. I do know that the need for water conservation was not part of the weekly newsletter that went out last Friday, and there is still nothing on the town website about it. I do know that the entire state is still under a drought warning with the DEP pushing water conservation measures across the state. Mr. Cryin sent me a message a couple of weeks ago in response to my email on this, saying that the town was going to continue to monitor the drought and look for inclusion in future newsletters. Has the town decided that this is not an issue that warrants any attention or any action? I'm looking for, you know, your input to me as to, you know, what your views are on this. But let me put this in perspective, at least in terms of my views on this. I noted a couple of days ago that there was also a notice on the website about drones. Now, I don't know anything about the drone situation, but my view, if I was to use that as a comparison of what's important to this town and compare drone situation versus water, I'd say water is like 10 million times, billion times more important than, than the drone situation. I did a quick back-of-the-envelope analysis of the value of the residence, residential units in this town, and it was about $6 billion. If we ran out of water, that $6 billion valuation would instantly go to zero. And so, that's why I say water is significantly more important than posting information about drones. It's not that I have any problem with posting that information. So, my question is, conserving water costs the town virtually nothing. Including this information in different media that you're already using, costs us nothing. Why are we not doing something to educate people about this problem? Even, you know, they may think that just because we got rain a couple of times and we have more in the forecast, the problem is gone. Problem is as severe as it has been for months. No one on the town council or administration seems concerned enough about this to take even the slightest action to alert and remind residences and residents and businesses to conserve water. My understanding is that no one really knows how much water is in the Buried Valley aquifer, from which we get most of our water. Given that we really don't know, isn't it prudent to conserve this water? Haven't we had to replace some wells, or at least dig some wells deeper due to the reduced water levels? Was that cost-free? Did somebody come in and say, you know, "I'll do it for you for nothing"? Whereas if we had conserved water, maybe we wouldn't have had some of those costs. As the saying goes, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. I have done what I can do on this issue, it's up to you to decide if you want to drink. Thank you. Any answers to my questions about where you stand on this?
Council President.
Go ahead.
Mr. Dolsky, I mentioned some of the issues that you brought up at the last meeting on your behalf, since you mentioned that you aren't going to be able to hear. We will, we follow the DEP's guidance on this, and we do do a lot of notification during the summer and during those times. I think we will work on our communication efforts on water, on droughts, and all of that during the other periods as well, so we will work on that.
I haven't seen anything in months. I mean, are we concerned about it? I guess not.
Nick Comyek again. Real quick, the question was, is the minimum usage diminished for the, for the amount of water that's going to be used? You have a minimum usage, and it stays within a certain bound, is that minimum usage reduced?
No, stays the same. Stays the same, yeah. And I, and I can even give you a marked.
Is that your only question?
No, no.
Wait, yeah, just wait for the.
Sorry, sorry.
I have a correspondence here from the Bureau of Water Allotment and Wealth Permitting from April of 2024, and in brief here, a review of the most recent, recent deficit surplus evaluation from 2023 concerning Precipity. The water system has a system surplus of 1.151 million gallons of water per day, 73.936 million gallons per month, and 630.608 million gallons of water for year. Now, then he goes on, Mr. Comar, and he says, "The township's state-affordable housing requirements fall outside the purvey of the water allotment and wealth permitting, and any comments or question about those responsibilities be directed to the township." So, this is the question. What population number can this surplus sustain that Mr. Comar mentioned? Mr. Comar did not answer that. And an example, the average American uses 100 gallons of water per day, the average resident uses 100,000 gallons during the year. So, I think this is important for the town to decipher, and remember, NJDEP has a lower standard than the Highlands. NJDEP does not consider how much water's going back into the ground, only how much water you're pumping out. But this might be helpful in the lawsuit against the affordable housing, because how many numbers are we going to be made to? Because how many numbers are we gonna, uh, be made to, uh, sustain? So these numbers here mi- might help us. And, and I think I sent you, uh, the one email with these numbers, but I'd rather have somebody else do the math. How much, what population number does Precipiny's water deficit evaluation? How, how much can that, can that, uh, can, what number of population could that be sustained? And I think that's important. Because then what's gonna happen? We're gonna have to pay more money for diversions, buy more water from Jersey City and Morris County Municipal? And who's gonna share that bill? Everybody? Or just the developers and the residents of the new, new housing? And, uh, finally, uh, Precipiny seems that it's okay with pilot deals for these rich developers 15 and 30 years, but we need the political courage to, to, not inflict, but to administer a stormwater utility tax, which I talked about before, on these large corporate impervious surfaces. And it's a good tax with a positive loop, loophole. The money goes back to mitigate the impervious surface and, and, uh, have it mitigated with green infrastructure. But if you don't have the stormwater utility tax, and it only affects big impervious surf, mostly corporate property. You won't get the, you won't get the money for that, for that mitigation. So I'd like you also to, uh, consider, consider that. And if you need those numbers again for one of your, uh, engineers or something to work out, I think it's important and I think it's relevant to the lawsuit.
My name is Jack Raya. I'm a member of the Precipity Troy Hill Board of Education. These comments are in my capacity as a private citizen and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Precipity Board of Education. In listening to your comments at the last meeting, I, I'd want to point out that our differences are on policy and nothing else. I respectfully, respectfully disagree with a comment Mr. Cryan made at the last town council meeting. No one is worried about this audit, especially since the Board of Education has its own audit that consistently earns an unqualified opinion that the financial statements represent fairly the financial condition of the school district, that it is completed on time, unlike three quarters of the school districts in New Jersey, and that finds no internal control weaknesses. If anyone has any genuine concerns, the public is welcome to attend Thursday's School Board Meeting and listen to a presentation on the audit by the auditor of the school district. Of course, in the long term, the town's audit is beside the point. The real issue is establishing a recurring shared revenue agreement between the town and the school district. The mayor's correct that as of now, there are no students from a pilot program in Precipiny. However, that will change most likely at some point in 2025 as apartments at 1515 Route 10 come up for rent. We have never said the students will all come at once, but it is fair to say that there will be many more students in 10 years from pilots than there are now. Demographic studies suggest at least 600 more students than now. Assuming a low ball estimate of 20,000 per student cost, that equates to a potential increase in costs of $12 million per year, every year, at a time when inflation and revenue caps have put a considerable strain on the budget of the school district. As a result, in my opinion, a shared revenue agreement on a per-student basis would seem to be the only sustainable, long-term solution for the town. This issue has created uncertainty for the last year. A signed agreement would eliminate that uncertainty. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everybody.
Mr. Raya, just a quick question to, uh, follow up on what you said. So you said this Thursday is the school board meeting and, and your audit is going to be?
The auditor with, um, with the audit firm will present the results of the audit. He'll talk about it. The board members will, will provide questions, will ask questions that they have. And, uh, and if there's any issue, then during the public session, anyone with the public can then raise any questions that they have as well.
And for the public, what time and what place will your meeting be?
I believe it's six o'clock on, uh, on, uh, Thursday. Yeah, on the 19th Thursday.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'd like.
One more.
Come on up.
Richard Suarez, I apologize for getting here late and breaking the flow of the conversation before. I was wondering why the function to ask for an over request is not listed under the transparency header of the town website. It seems like the logical place for it and would be easier for residents to find it. I also hope that the town could post on its website, reminding residents that foil wrapping paper is not recyclable and should not be commingled with other forms of paper destined to be recycled. This time of year, a lot of wrapping paper, it all gets mixed up. It creates a mess at the Murph units. A new roof was installed on the Lake Hiawatha Library two weeks after the mayor said the town would not put another nickel into the building. The roof has been leaking for years, judging by the wet and molding ceiling tiles at the south end of the building. Tiles still have not been, been replaced, even though they are green and black mold on them. Why haven't they been replaced? When you walk into the lobby, there's lights out in the lobby. It feels like you're walking into a cave, and it's not a very inviting atmosphere for people using the buildings. If the lights need tubes, replace them. If they need ballast, replace them. I cannot understand why the building is treated as an orphan by this administration. Perhaps if the mayor, Barbario, had visited the site sooner, the contract could have been modified to a roof repair and not a full replacement, since the plan is to leave the structure for a new replace, for new location. Why waste money for an entire roof replacement? For those of you who may question my knowledge on roofing, I was the in-house SAM overseeing roofing projects in the $750,000 range at 2008 prices at my former position. These included EPDM roofs, referred to as rubber roofs, built-up roofs using hot tar and coal process applications, and slate roof repairs. So exactly how much did the new roof cost? Perhaps in the range of $40,000? I, I know, put in an, an over request for the price. The garish-looking "Welcome to Precipiny" sign on Route 46, which is something a used car lot would normally advertise on, should be replaced by a permanent dignified "Welcome to Precipiny" sign with the city seal on it. Perhaps the state-owned land in the area could be used for that purpose. Perhaps it, it could in, include the ma- the mayor's name, as long as it was constructed with a removal name plate when others are in office. Should this, this should be done facing the eastbound traffic as well, if land is available in that area. Lastly, Mayor Barbario's excuse for not attending the mayor's meeting about the mystery drones was one of the weakest excuses I've ever heard. It may turn out to be an elaborate prank, but no one knows for sure. It may be something sinister. You passed on a meeting about a subject that the entire country is talking about to attend a holiday party with seniors. Your reasoning for skipping the drone meeting was how the seniors looked forward to your attendance. That, of course, is your opinion, Mr. Mayor. I didn't know you could read minds. You also stated you were briefed on the subject and did not need to attend a statewide meeting. Exactly who briefed you on the drones, Mr. Mayor? Perhaps it was your radio talk show buddy, Bill Spadia, who you always seem to have time for, to talk to, no matter when it is. And I left the page behind, but I'd like to have some answers to at least some of those questions. I come up here all the time, I ask questions. And I get crickets for replies. Can someone please explain to me some of the questions? Why, why, why we spend money on, on a building that the mayor himself said he wasn't gonna put any money in, into? Not a nickel, was his exact quote.
I'm gonna answer that real quick, 'cause that.
Before you, before you, yeah, let him, let him finish.
I'm done.
Time's up. Done?
Okay, so.
Time's up.
And I'll answer all the other questions later with regards to your drone comments and stuff like that. The reason why we fixed the roof was because we don't have a location for a new, uh, library right now, and the roof needed to be repaired. So that's why we replaced it. We weren't gonna let it get more dilapidated, so that's why. And the director requested for, for help from the town. So that's that.
It, it's been leaking for years.
Okay, you got your answer, so.
All right, it was kind of like.
Sorry, Tony Fasano again. Uh, as a, uh, opposing mayor Jamie Barbario, 500 mayors out of 600 towns did not attend that meeting. Also, our assemblyman, Brian Bergen, said it was a total waste of time and several others. Uh, as far as the drones go, the only people that can actually attack them or do anything or shoot them down is that Ben Grant is the military. They're looking into our county sheriffs, taking action against the drones. As the same people who lied to us about CDC and what's going on today. So we have to put up with it right for right now. Uh, like I said, but 500 additional mayors did not show.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Judy, I gotta say, you've made so many motions today.
[laughing]
So, motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda, be it resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine and non-controversial, but a township council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member submits, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to the approval of minutes, we have, uh, minutes from the agenda meeting of November 12th, 2024, minutes from the regular meeting of November 26th, 2024. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on to presentations and reports, Mayor?
Uh, thank you, um, go ahead. Um, I'll start off with, uh, December 6th. Uh, there's an organization in Lake Hiawatha called the Friends of Lake Hiawatha, and they're dedicated to the beautification of Lake Hiawatha, especially after the street skate gets done. But every year they have Santa's arrival, and that's run by Antoinette Simmons and John Pascarella and myself. Um, Council Vice President and Councilman, um, Musella were there to celebrate. It was actually a very nice event. December 7th was a packed day, uh, pretty much, uh, started at eight in the morning with Applebee's, and the reason why I bring this up is Toys for Tots with the US Marines. And they, um, it was a really nice event, nice, uh, to see a lot of our, you know, township presidents there, those that are in need. Then also on December 7th, uh, Serbo Nursery had, uh, Trees for Troops, and, um, I attended that along with Council, uh, Vice President. And the Serbo family is an icon here in, in Precipiny. They've been a part of, I think they're one of the first Italian-American families that came in, uh, to Precipiny. They've been, uh, steadfast and committed to our troops. Uh, I speak to the owner, uh, Tony Serbo, who I played ball with up at Precipiny Hills. Uh, they make it a special day and a special event. And then, of course, that night, we had our, um, the township tree lighting, which, uh, was a very eventful night for our, our community, a very eventful night for our children, and, um, I want to thank, uh, the township employees that were, uh, dedicated for that day, and also the high school students from Precipiny Hills High School and Precipiny High, who, um, acted as elves. Um, then on the 9th, uh, we all, all attended, um, the Crime Stoppers, uh, Sheriff Grant's Crime Stoppers, which is, uh, a unit here in Morris County that was started, I think years ago by, uh, Sheriff John Fox, and, and, um, at that time, the chairman of the Republican Committee, uh, Morris County, uh, John Setti, and it's been a steadfast, it's been great for the, um, following, you know, following those that do crimes and to get prosecuted for, uh, things that, of course, they shouldn't be doing. I know, uh, Councilman, uh, Karifi, Council President Karifi is also involved in that as well. I want to take this opportunity to, to commend, um, our PAL director, Nick Bronzino. Once again, uh, we had a meeting this Thursday, and I really appreciate the plans that you have coming up forward to partnership with the township of Precipiny. I, I, and you, you really seem to have a hold on it, and, and that makes me feel comfortable as a mayor. I just want to make one thing clear. Since, um, this year, actually, we've spent less money at the PAL than we did previously. We had a, um, director there who was being paid by the township and health benefits as well, but that's no longer, as of this year, it was no longer. And Nick is being paid by the, uh, PAL. I just want to make people understand that and make that clear, because a lot of people like to make issues with regards to the township partnering with the PAL, and I can't figure out why that would even be an issue, because the PAL is the Precipiny Athletic League and with the township of Precipiny. So you would figure that would be the best avenue for the town to take. And not just that, but also it helps both sides out, our recreation department as well as theirs. Okay, Mr. Suarez, I'm gonna answer your questions with regards to, number one, the open up in on transparency page. That's a simple fix. We could put that on there. That's, I have no issue with that. But I want to get to the signs, 'cause you made several comments with regards to signs. It started with the pumpkin patch sign, and my name was on it. I don't know how long you lived in Precipiny. I don't know how many years you lived here.
Over three decades.
Okay, I'm here six decades, so, but that's beside the point. Mayor Piori had a name on signs. Mayor Letts had a name on signs. Mayor, uh, Luther had a name on sign. I had my name on a sign. And then Mayor Sariana had names on signs, and now again, I'm the mayor, I have my name on the sign. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna be upfront with you. Any signs that come out, it's just, my name's gonna be on it. There's no, you know, and you know what's nice? I got a call from residents who asked, "Can we just pay for the sign?" I said, "No, no. This has been going on since Precipiny's become a Faulkner former government." And that's just how it is. The mayor represents the township. And I know you might not like that, that's up to you. I can't, that's your opinion, and, and I respect your opinion, but I'm not gonna lie to you. Next sign, my name's gonna be on it. Okay, and that's not being arrogant, that's just being the fact that that's how it's been. But I have never seen you in any other meetings. When I was, when I took office in 2010, I was mayor, 2010, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, never mentioned anything about signs, and I come back here, nothing until about a year before the election, which I'm fine with. Now, the sign on 46, I don't control that. I was just as surprised as you when I saw my name on there. But here's the thing, if you go and you see, because I had to call the individual up saying, "I don't know why my name's on there, but it's your sign," go to Paramus, go to all these areas, and the mayor's sign's up there, Paramus mayor's sign's up there, and you know what? A lot of residents called me up and said, "That, that looks pretty good up there." Thank you, Mayor, for representing our town. Now, I'm gonna talk about the drones, which has become a political issue, not, not so much, you know, I've read all the statements with regards to the drones and stuff like that, and yes, I have been briefed. I get briefed every single day about the drones. Okay, on December 3rd, when I came out of a council meeting- Okay, on December 3rd, when I came out of a council meeting, I saw 12 drones myself flying over Parsippany High School. I contacted the chief. I spoke to the business administrator. Let's talk about that meeting that everybody wants to make this big, um, rift about, uh, about the drones. That morning, myself and all the Morris County mayors, we get together regularly. We talk to each other regularly on a regular basis with regards. So we had people going down there, mayors going down there, and they were actually reporting back. Now, for you to come up and say, holiday party? Well, here's what I'll tell you about our senior citizens. I take them serious. I love them. I've known most of them since I'm a kid, since I'm a little boy. I went there, and I talked to them about the drones. We had a good discussion about it. And then I find out that one woman was trying to get a picture of me to send to another political adversary to show that I was there. Could you imagine that? I can't imagine who would do that on this council. I can't, but that's, uh, that's, that's why I'm gonna take that. So, that being said, I just kind of find it funny, and also I'm gonna let you know, I'm gonna be a regular on the Bill Spadia Show. Okay, um, that's, I gotta be candid with you. I'm gonna be very honest with you. I am gonna be a regular. So, that being said, and there's a lot of other comments that were made by individuals in this room, um, that I'm just gonna ignore them, because they all want to say that, you know, I, I worked for the federal government. I did this, I did that. Well, you know what? Not for anything. You don't any longer. And I think the difference is this. When I'm being told I'm not a leader, you know why? Because I stand up to that person. I don't take their garbage. I don't take anything they say unless you want to have an open dialogue, come to my office, and what? And have a really good conversation. We don't have to agree on everything, we don't. That being said, now I'm gonna get to-
We can't have back and forth, sir.
Mr. Suarez, you didn't, so I apologize for that. But it was meant for other people in the room as well. So, let's get to this here. Yesterday, we had a Department Homeless, or the FBI, we had a, I guess, another one of those, um, what's it called? Briefings again, and we got no answers, none whatsoever. Now, I was on News Nation, and this is what I said on News Nation. I said, if the CIA doesn't know, the Secret Service doesn't know, the FBI doesn't know, and the federal government doesn't know, how are we gonna know? And it kind of makes you wonder, do they know? I think they do know. I think they're full of it. I think they know, and they're not telling us. Because when, the question was asked of me, this was asked of me. Mayor, they say that these drones are nothing to be concerned about, but they don't know where they're coming from. Well, if you don't know where they're coming from, how are we not supposed to be concerned? How are we not supposed to be concerned? If you don't know where they're coming from, or who's flying these, um, drones, but there's nothing to worry about, that tells me you know, you know what's going on. Um, I'm gonna read into the record tonight. Uh, we got this today, if I can find it. You have it on there? Hey, it's gotta be here. My point is this. So, I can be transparent, and I'm gonna be transparent tonight. Yesterday, during that briefing, it kept cutting off. I had our business administrator on the briefing. I had the chief on it, okay? So, a whole bunch of us mayors, you know what we did? We got tired of hearing nothing from the FBI, from the CIA, from the Secret Service. We got tired of it. So what we did is we went to Gorayab Medical Hospital for Children with Cancer. And I entered the, a hospital where my brother was diagnosed with cancer, a brain tumor, and passed away. I didn't want to go to that, but I felt as a mayor to represent the township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, that was the right thing to do. And if it wasn't for Mayor Ace Gallagher, I would not have went, not because drones. We have to live our lives, first of all. Not because of drones or anything like that, was because it was the right thing to do. And I am so happy that I went, and I'll tell you why I was happy. I got to speak to some of the kids there with cancer. I know what my mother and father went through. It was hell. And what did we do? We sung Christmas carols to them. And you know what? I'll miss any briefing, as long as I have backup, which I do have, which no one believes I do, but I do, to go be with those kids. And that was the greatest moment as a mayor for me, that I got to speak to kids who had cancer and they felt they had hope that day, yesterday. So, I'm gonna end it there, but I also want to say this. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, um, Kwanzaa, whatever you celebrate. I'm a firm believer in all religions, as long as they come from peace, respect, and love. So, thank you very much.
Township Council?
Yes, um, I just want to echo what, uh, Mayor Barberio said about Nick and the PAL. I happen to attend the meeting, and as a, uh, longtime volunteer in this town of many different sports and activities, I see the energy that Nick has, and it's just amazing. And, uh, you know, he reminds me of someone I knew many years ago, but he just has so much energy, and I just compliment, the things that he wants to bring to the PAL in partnership, not only with the town, but with the school district. And, uh, I commend you, Nick, and, uh, I'll be there to help you as liaison and as councilman and as just Frank Neglia, whatever you need from me. And, uh, I appreciate all you're doing for the PAL. I think you're gonna do a great job. Um, regarding the library, I did have a library meeting as well, and, um, there's some things I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna talk to the business administrator about and the mayor regarding some of the other things, uh, in the building that are, that aren't, I think, necessary to keep the building going for the time being, uh, that, uh, they're gonna need in the future, just in the next couple of years, to keep the building moving forward. And also, on the agenda tonight, a zoning board of adjustment, alternate to, two-year term, 12, 31, 25, violent, unexpired term. And I'm gonna nominate Betty Lou DeCrosse, who it had in her, her, uh, resume. Uh, Betty Lou has an amazing resume. She's also a licensed municipal clerk in the state of New Jersey. As we all know, she's been an assemblywoman, um, a real estate owner, agent, and, uh, she's just, uh, an amazing resume, a deputy commissioner from the DCA, president and co-owner of Galen DeCrosse for over 20 years. Uh, it's just a person who knows this town so well and can do so much, I think, in that role and, uh, and really help the zoning board. So, I make a motion to accept Betty Lou as the next candidate.
Well, before we, we vote on that-
Well, I have a motion on the floor. I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, yeah, we're gonna get there. A motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Uh, now we can have discussion.
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's great and all that. She's been of service to the, uh, to the town. Uh, don't dispute that. She's got a stellar resume. But why would we want somebody on the zoning board, a quasi-judicial branch of our government, who's currently embroiled in a $15 million lawsuit as we speak with a neighboring municipality? And serious allegations have been made against this individual, ranging from gross negligence and confidence and corruption from the current mayor of Dover. So, why would we want this person on our zoning board?
First off, she has a civil suit against this town.
Excuse me, sorry, yeah, right.
Town does not have anything against her.
She's suing, she's suing the township of Dover. Thank you. Um, so, you know, why, why would we want her on our zoning board in light of this?
So, are you saying that anyone that has a lawsuit throughout the country cannot put, should not put in for anything because they have a lawsuit going on?
Well, no, what I'm saying, council president, is that I think she can be of service to the township, just not with an open legal matter. I think that's incumbent upon us all. If we're putting somebody on a board like zoning board or planning board with actual power over our residents, you know, this is a serious matter to not overlook.
Right, but it's a civil matter, it's not criminal.
Yeah, but would we want to, you know, be embroiled in this? And what type of message does it send to people who are qualified, like John Roderick?
I don't think it would have anything to do with the town of Parsippany. It's between her and the town of Dover. It has nothing to do with Parsippany.
Well, I disagree. I think it would be a bad look, especially in light of qualified nominee like John, who's been at this for a year, who has a solid real estate background, a new person who's interested in doing the work. I think it is a, is a better recommendation for us.
I mean, I, I would just, looking at, now, I don't have anything against Mr. Roderick, but if you're looking at Mrs. DeCrosse's resume, I mean, this is a quite impressive resume.
No, I don't dispute the resume. I think it's a strong resume. But I just think that it, it is a serious thing to overlook, active litigation. Maybe our township attorney-
Has nothing to do with our town, Justin.
Honestly, I don't think it has anything to do with the town. She's a plaintiff in litigation against her former employer. So, I don't think that affects or impairs her judgment on the zoning board of adjustment.
Thank you, counsel.
Personal opinion.
Well, I disagree with that opinion, but we'll just put it to a vote.
Okay, no other discussion, correct? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
No.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
So we have four yes votes, one no vote, motion passes, and, uh, Mr. Croch is now the new zoning board member of adjustment. Any other member from council?
Yes, no, I would definitely like to comment, uh, on a couple of things. You know, I think, you know, first off, uh, you know, I respect that the mayor did something that was very personally hard, and going to, uh, a hospital to do caroling for, for kids with cancer, I think, is commendable. Um, I think that's a, it's a really good act. It's something that, you know, I did this weekend, um, myself to people at Care One with severe, um, severe diseases and are in a living assisted facility. I, I think the, the question really is about, you know, when there are conflicting priorities, especially in light of something that everybody is asking us about currently, um, to pick those priorities accordingly. If we're in the middle of an issue that is of public concern, the priority should be going to a briefing regardless of whether or not you know in advance, and I don't know how anybody could have known in advance that the meeting was not gonna be of, of good use. Um, but that, that is the, the priority. Um, and sometimes it's okay to say that you made a mistake and you would have done something differently. Um, and in response to what Mr. Suarez said, I, I don't have any issue with, um, the administration or the mayor putting his name on things that, you know, previous mayors have put their names of, uh, that have been on before. But I think what we're seeing here, um, particularly, uh, it, it with the police department, for instance, has evolved, where we have, in the Parsippany Police Department, a unit that is named the Mayor James R. Barberio's Community Relations Unit. I don't believe in, correct me if I'm wrong, have any other previous mayors named, had their, a, a community relations unit named after them? Think that's a serious matter of politicization, and that's probably why, uh, residents are concerned by, um, stamping their name on taxpayer entities or taxpayer, uh, signs and so forth. I, I think, uh, you know, you know, one issue that I, I wanted to, you know, talk about, is it possible, business administrator crying, that, you know, the documents like this are extremely helpful? But is it possible that the public, when we're making major capital expenditures, almost $2 million worth of vehicles, that these be made in advance to the public? So we're not just looking at an agenda and, you know, it's a considerable amount of vehicles that we're asking questions about?
Yes, it is possible. It was also, uh, on the Capitol ordinance that went out earlier in great detail. The Capitol ordinance was 17 or 18 pages long, and each of those items were listed in there.
Okay. And, and I did also ask about our 2024-220, authorizing the purchase of one 2025 Ford Explorer Active Four-Wheel Drive vehicle with options. Uh, which department is that for?
That is for Recreation.
Okay, and is this a take-home vehicle? Or is this for only the department to have during township, uh, business hours?
That is, uh, a vehicle for Recreation. Uh, I don't know, uh, it's not listed as a take-home vehicle. It's not something that's being talked about as a take-home vehicle at this point.
Do we know who the vehicle's for?
It's replacing a 2012, it's for the Recreation Department.
Okay.
Yeah, it's replacing a 2012, um, I believe it's a Jeep Cherokee, some sort.
So who's currently driving this vehicle?
Which?
Um, the, the one in Recreation.
It's, it's a Recreation vehicle, so it's, so it's for multiple people.
It's for multiple people, okay. Yeah, I mean, I would definitely want to know if this is a, a take-home vehicle. Uh, that would definitely be important to know for me to vote on this.
Okay. I, I don't have that answer for you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Anybody else from council?
Yeah, so, Economic Development Team alongside Mayor James Barberio, welcome to following businesses to Parsippany with ribbon-cunning celebrations. Asian Walk at 184 Parsippany Road on Saturday, November 16th. Floor and Decor at 1159 Route 46 East on February, November 22nd. Flowless by Chris on 9 North Beverick Road on Sunday, December 1st. And GYL Financial Strategies at Fort Campus Drive, Suite 304 on Tuesday, December 10th. The next meeting for Economic Development Committee is Thursday, January 16th at 6:30. Uh, it's at 90 East Halsey Road, third floor conference room. Public is invited. Please RSVP with Chairman Frank Cahill at 973-559-6000. And just to continue with the grants that we've, uh, introduced our different customers to here in, in the, the town, it's well over a million and a half that they've applied for in grants to help supplement their businesses. So as you're starting your new business here in Parsippany, please reach out to Frank, give you more information about our grant program as well.
I meant to just make one remark. I want to recognize, and I didn't do that with the PAL. I want to recognize the generosity of the Kiwanis Club of Greater Parsippany for the contribution they gave to the PAL, $5,000, so that should be recognized.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a, a comment in reference to the, the drones and everything out there. I can tell you for sure that the director of Public Safety at Morris County, Scott DiGirolamo, the director of the Office of Emergency Management, Jeff Paul, and Sheriff Gannon are working diligently. Those people work 70, 80 hours. I know personally, they work 70, 80 hours a week. They are constantly, constantly updating police chiefs throughout Morris County, mayors on any information that comes in on these drones. Sometimes more than once a day, if that information comes in. So, whatever they are getting is being funneled down to the local police department. So, you know, there may be days where there's no new information. But if something new does come in, I can tell you for a fact that those three are advising every town in Morris County and keeping them abreast as much as possible.
Ted, onto, uh, the council president's point. I, yeah, I've been in touch with Sheriff Gannon. I, I would agree with him. Um, I've sent him things, you know, at all times of the night that I'm, people are sending to me about the chemtrails and, uh, everything that, you know, people are hearing and seeing. Um, and, you know, he's been fantastic, absolutely great at debunking anything that might be qualified as misinformation. Um, and I actually, you know, asked him, he'll, he's gonna see if it can be done, doing a misinformation session, because according to the FBI, uh, when I spoke to the Newark Field Office, 80% of what is being reported is actually, you know, perfectly legally allowable aircraft that is permitted to fly in the air zone, and they have over, uh, a million leads to, to, to go through. Um, and I think one thing that could really, um, decrease what is falsely being reported is something along those lines. But, yeah, the sheriff has been great.
Can I just elaborate on the FBI part? I really have to, with regards to the FBI. I know you, you might have spoke to somebody down there, and that's, that's good. I mean, that's very good. But I don't know, yesterday, if you were listening in to what the mayor of, um, Foreign Park said. Um, and he questioned them with regards to drones, and he, they pretty much said the same thing, if I'm correct or incorrect, let me know, um, that all these drones are flying legally. But when we try to get one of our OEMs, he said, up in the air, we have to, the federal, which, I can't remember, so-
FAA.
FAA, says, no, you can't do it. So they check on townships, but these, all these 80,000 other ones can just fly freely. It just doesn't make sense. Makes no sense whatsoever. And I'm not, listen, I'm not pressing on- And I'm not, listen, I'm not pressing on the FBI or anything like that. They might not know. But that's what all our information says. Call the FBI. Call the FBI. Call the FBI. And we still have no answers.
Thank you.
Township Attorney?
No report this evening, Council President.
Business Administrator?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mayor. So, a couple of things. As far as the drones go, in that meeting yesterday, the meeting was a briefing that was set up by the White House Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. It included senior-level representatives of the FBI, Department of Homeland Security, Department of Defense, and Federal Aviation Administration. One of the things that they kept talking about in this meeting was, this is China House rules. Don't let anything out, what's said. Everything stays here. And then, the next morning, they put out a joint statement saying exactly everything that they said. So, it's, you know, there was an incredible amount of frustration in this meeting. The good thing that they did this time, as opposed to the state one, was they gave a little bit of leeway. They allowed for staff to attend if mayors weren't able to or mayors wanted other support to attend. So, with mayor, I was able to be on there. I wasn't allowed to be on the state one as a business administrator. It was mayors only. And our chief was on there as well. And another smart thing that the federal government did was, instead of dragging a whole bunch of mayors and elected officials down to, you know, the backside of New Jersey, I don't mean that disrespectfully, but far down New Jersey to Ewing Township. Nothing against Ewing Township, but it's far. Instead of making everybody go down there to say nothing and frustrate the few mayors that actually attended and all of the assembly people and senators that attended, frustrating them to no end, the federal government at least had the decency to make sure that if they weren't gonna say anything, they did it by Zoom, so they could tell you at the comfort of your phone or computer. And it was very helpful in that aspect. The key takeaways were, local and state officials have been calling for more transparency about the drones and greater action. Federal officials said that they understand why people are concerned, given the volume of reported drone sightings, and are devoting significant resources to supporting New Jersey and all of the law enforcement partners who are actively investigating reported sightings. The mayors on the call and the mayors afterwards that a mayor had talked to and that have been in news articles expressed a lot of frustration. And they were skeptical about the explanations. The joint statement that went out today pretty much said, we assess that the sightings to date include a combination of lawful commercial drones, hobbyist drones, law enforcement drones, as well as manned fixed-wing aircraft, helicopters, and stars mistakenly reported as drones. They have no reason to believe the drones are dangerous or that they pose a risk to national security. And maybe they don't, because if they did, something probably would have happened. But it's still annoying, and they should say it if they can explain it. They downplayed the drones that the drones posed any kind of threat. Nelson Delgado, the Assistant Special Agent in charge of the Newark office of the FBI, said they have received 5,931 tips since beginning their investigation on November 26th. Less than 100, 98 of those generated any type of lead related to their investigation. They believe many of the sightings have been lawful and/or misidentified. Then he turned his focus on to needing to warn members of the public not to point lasers at any aircraft or to try to shoot down drones. And that's where he kind of focused on. What Mayor Barbario mentioned about Mayor Taylor, what he said was, the point that he made was, Florham Park, the borough of Florham Park has drones. They're not allowed to fly their police department or their zoning office drones without permission from the FAA, the Morris County Airport Tower ahead of time. Yet, all of these lawful drones that are out there, none of them have had permission from the tower or from the FAA. So, what's the difference? So, you know, that's kind of the frustration with this whole issue. The consensus was that more people need to know what's going on in order to calm our residents and to calm the feelings out there. And more transparency gets the conspiracy theories away. This was, you know, it's an opportunity to let everybody know. And I understand people's frustration. We, as a township, have been very frustrated, as officials have been very frustrated, because right when this started happening, we were the second place where they were discovered after Picatinny. They were over the reservoir. We were told that any information to this, it's not a local thing, send it up to the sheriff's office. Immediately, it was taken from the sheriff's office and sent to the FBI. So, if you have information, send it to the FBI. And I don't know if anybody has reported any of these drones to the FBI. I mean, a lot of people have talked about, oh, there's a drone over my house. Oh, there's a drone over the lake. Oh, there's a drone. I don't know if you've gone through the trouble of reporting it to the FBI. I have. It's a 25-minute process. It's a nightmare.
I even mentioned that. I'm sorry to interrupt. I just said, I agree with you. I mentioned that. It should be streamlined.
You can't find it on the website. It's really a nightmare. And if you call, you're waiting on hold for over 20 minutes, a lot of times. So, I'm not sure that they have realized, or they even have a realization of the amount of drones that are out there. So, it's frustrating. Again, they're telling us, don't handle this, we will handle it. And, but we're supposed to be taking the blame on this stuff. So, all we can really do is share your frustration. And we're sorry that we don't have better answers. We deserve better answers. You deserve better answers. So, that's the drone update from the briefing from the federal government yesterday. If you're as frustrated as I was after it, I'm also sorry about that. It's the last meeting of the year. It's been a great year. A lot has been accomplished. I appreciate the opportunity to work with this council and for our great residents here. So, thank you for that. Hope everybody has a happy holiday. The menorah lighting is on the 26th. Please join us from 7:00 to 8:30. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Township Clerk?
I have no report. Moving along to the non-consent agenda. R 2024-210, authorized transfers between Budget Appropriation Number Two. Motion to approve the resolution. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes R 2024-211, authorizing the purchase of two 2025 Ford Explorer Active Four-Wheel Drive vehicles with options from Nielsen Ford to Morristown. Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes R 2024-212, authorizing the purchase of three 2025 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles with options from Nielsen Ford to Morristown. Motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R 2024-213, authorizing the purchase of two 225 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles with options from Nielsen Ford. Motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes R 2024-214, authorizing the purchase of three ProView six-by-four chassis from Allegiance Trucks. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
R 2024-215, authorizing the purchase of three Leach Model 2 R3 29 cubic yard rear-load refuse bodies with options. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes R 2024-216, authorizing the appointment of three new police officers. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes R 2024-217, authorizing the purchase of a Western Star 47 truck with options. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes R 2024-218, authorizing the purchase of two Western Star 47 trucks with options. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. McGrath, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes R 2024-219, authorizing the purchase of two Amperol AL120 S14 hooklifts. Motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?